Good evening, we're back. We are going to, um, we're gonna do regular session and then we go back and, and finish up the budget. So, um, we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. And the National Anthem tonight will be sung by David Gigg Awulso from Jacob Hyatt Magnet School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, see, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? All the raptors we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the buzz bursting in air, gave proof to the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. That was awesome. Thank you so much.
Oh, that was awesome.
Yes, it is, yeah. Alright, so we will start, um, we do with, um, uh, oh, I'm sorry, let's do a roll call.
Member Clancy?
Here.
Here.
Member Camara?
Here.
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 Alright, so we take up, um, executive session. So, um, pursuant to the action taken
in executive session, it is moved to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and the Educational Association of Worcester Units A and B for the period of September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
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 In pursuit to action taken in executive session, it is moved to ratify the memorandum of agreement between Worcester School Committee and the Educational Association of Worcester Units A and B for a period of September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2026. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
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 In pursuant to the action taken in executive session, it is moved to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and the Educational Association of Worcester Instructional Assistance Unit for a period of September 1st, 2022 through August 31st, 2023. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Yes.
Member Camara?
Yes.
Yes.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
In pursuant to the action taken in executive session, it is moved to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and the Educational Association of Worcester Instructional Assistance Unit for a period of September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2026. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Yes.
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 In pursuant to the action taken in executive session, it is moved to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and the International Union of Public Employees, Plumbers, and Steamfitters Local 125 for a period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
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 In pursuant to the action taken in executive session, executive session, it is moved to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Worcester School Committee and the International Union of Public Employees, Tradesmen Local 135 for a period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Yes.
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 In pursuant to the action taken in executive session, it is moved to ratify the memorandum of agreement between Worcester School Committee and the Teamsters Union Local 174 and on behalf of the Worcester Public Schools Transportation Mechanics, establishing the pay raise for bargaining unit members retroactive to July 1st, 2022. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Yes.
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 And we would take the consent agenda together. That's it. Those that oppose, no, so ordered. And we move on to held items. Um, we're still gonna hold that until we finish the budget. We will move on to, um, public comment. Anyone? Public comment? Ms. Medina, you wanted to speak, public comment, right?
Yeah.
You have two minutes. State your name and city of residence, please.
Yeah, of course. So my name is, um, Nellie Medina. I'm a resident of Worcester, a mom of a public school parent, and a local activist and organizer, and I'm here to comment on two different items tonight. So the first one is the passage of the Thrive Act. I'm in support of that. So the Thrive Act, it will change how students learn by replacing the MCAS with project-based academic work that can be done to foster deep learning than the traditional standardized tests. We need to reimagine education, and the Thrive Act is the first step. The MCAS graduation requirement is a trap to English learners, students with high intellects who don't test well, students with anxiety, or students with inadequate support systems. My son, um, has extreme anxiety. He's one of the smartest kids, um, you know. However, um, he shuffles and rocks when it comes time to, um, do any kind of assessment, and so I think about him when I think about the MCAS. I asked this committee to support the Thrive Act amendment so that every child in the city will have equal playing field and opportunity to succeed, which is the definition of equity. When a student fails the MCAS in the 10th grade, they do not move on. They are in that same seat, taking that same test until they do pass it, but what happens is they watch their peers move on. So their peers end up, um, taking biology, um, doing extracurricular, um, opportunities within the school that they cannot do until they pass that test. A large percentage of children from my community, youth from my community, end up dropping out. Um, I know people who have dropped out, whose children have dropped out, um, when it was their turn to take the MCAS. So I think we need to re, to reimagine, do this transformative thinking that we talked so much about, and I asked this committee, um, to please adopt the Thrive Act so our students can have, uh, a new chance to reimagine what their future looks like, but also I think it's important for the students to be the ones who tell us how they would like their intellect to be determined. Um, the second one is the renaming of St. Casimir's. So I spent about six years at St. Casimir's, and I think that we can do a better job when it comes to immortalizing another white man in the city of Worcester. Um, not everyone had a great experience there. I think that we need to really look into bringing the community in to make this decision. Are there other people that we could consider? Are there students who have moved on to do great things? And so my question is, why are we rushing this? Why now? This is an opportunity to bring community into this conversation, and you'd be remiss not to involve the community. Another thing is I remember La Familia, that parents, parents were asking if the Chandler Magnet School, they can change the name to La Familia, and the answer was no. So if we're not changing names of schools, why are we changing names of schools? And again, I plead with you, um, I spent a lot of time in alternative school, and it's a miracle that I'm standing here before you with the career that I have, um, have overcome so many obstacles. I remember having the same history book for all five years, and I think the leadership of that school was accountable. So I'm gonna ask that you hold this item or reexamine it, or re, or just bring the community into this conversation, because I'm sure that if you open it up, you're gonna hear a lot of, um, opportunities to maybe consider someone else, or even just students coming forward to say why this is not a good idea, this is not equity, and again, we need to, um, not name another building, um, after another white person when we're a city of diversity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, anyone else? Public comment? See anyone on? No, outside? Okay. We will now move on to reports of the Standing Committee. Um, Standing Committee of Finance and Operations met on May 22nd, 2023. Member O'Connell, Novick?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, did we have a public petition as well?
Did I miss that?
Did it get dropped?
The public petition was not in the right place. It went to general business.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, then. My apologies, Mr. Chair. The Standing Committee on Finance and Operations, uh, held a meeting on May 22nd, 2023, both online and here. Uh, it was called to order at 6:37. Uh, the full committee was present. We did take up the public petition from the Goddard, uh, Student Council regarding, um, reducing plastic waste at the school. Uh, Mr. Allen gave us a very thorough presentation, um, on the, um, some of the reasons behind the limitations we've had around, um, student access through, um, bubblers and the like. Um, as part of both the state SWIG grant and also, um, use of S R funding, Goddard will actually be receiving not just the three that they asked for, but four, um, bottle-filling stations between now and September of 2024. Um, I made a motion to file the item, and the motion was approved. And then we did receive our monthly update on the implementation of district-operated transportation. Um, we did highlight the additional drivers coming in, that the fueling station is now fully operational, um, and that we, or the timelines that we're following in terms of the additional driver, additional, uh, vehicles still, still coming in. We talked a little bit about the feelers, which of course are in the budget that is before us. Um, and we had a conversation again about availability of athletic buses and the, the sort of the tie between scheduling on the athletic side and what we have available. Did ask again, um, if there is anything that transportation needs to be, um, ongoingly implemented, uh, to make sure that it comes back to the committee. My colleagues will see that we have the chart regarding, um, in particular, what a difference there is in terms of the number of drivers we have this year versus last year. I made a motion to hold the item, what I assume will be one last time, Mr. Chair, and on a roll call of three to zero, the motion to adjourn was approved at 6:59 PM. That's my report.
Thank you. We'll, uh, look to file that. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Yes.
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 A report from Teaching, Learning, and Student Supports. Member McCullough?
Thank you. The Standing Committee on Teaching, Learning, and Student Supports met May 10th virtually. The meeting was called to order at 5:33, and present were myself, Vice Chair Mailman, and Member Camara. The first item was GB 2-292.2, to request that the administration explore offering drivers ed utilizing local driving schools. Executive Director Ellen Kelly gave an overview of the backup that was provided and stated that administration would continue to look at options, and Vice Chair Mailman requested that the administration consider hosting classes at the schools. I made a motion to hold the item until October for further review, and on a roll call of three to zero, the motion was approved. C and P 2-8.3, uh, a petition to the clerk to consider a petition from the PTO at Chandler Magnet School to convert the school to a completely bilingual school. Um, based on the fact that La Familia is moving over to Chandler Magnet to become one of our bilingual schools, the motion was made to file the item, and on a roll call of three to zero, the motion was approved. Item GB 2-21.1, Member Mailman, to review the availability of childcare for system educators in various positions and lack, in, in various geographic parts of the city. One example, high school teachers at Burnco and lack of early childcare availability in the area, past practices. Dr. Morris stated that administration conducted a survey of all educators in the district, and the responses were mostly from teachers with children under the age of five, with 59% reporting they could use district-provided care. Dr. Koo is looking into different options to help provide additional options and even more support for our educators. Member Camara requested that the data from the survey be shared with the committee, and Vice Chair Mailman made the motion to hold the item for further updates until October. On a roll call of three to zero, the item was approved, the motion was approved. GB 0-125, response of the administration to request, to present comprehensive data showing the test scores for all student subgroups since these initiatives started. This data should show changes over the years with particular emphasis upon the WPS student subgroups targeted through SOA funding, Hispanic students, English language learners, and students with disabilities. I made a motion to refer this item to the Standing Committee on Student and School Performance, and on a roll call of three to zero, the motion was approved, and the meeting adjourned at 5:53 PM.
Thank you. Motion to file. Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Yes.
Member Camara?
Yes.
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
And we are gonna next take, uh, the Standing Committee on Governance and Employee Issues. Member Clancy?
Thank you. Um, so the Standing Committee on Governance and Employees Issues met on May 15th. Um, the meeting was called to order at 5:32. Present, myself, Vice Chair McCullough, Member Johnson, Superintendent Monares, Deputy Superintendent Brian Allen, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Morris, and Dr. Koo. Um, the first item that we took up was to approve the policies, C H D, E C, I G D, and J I V. Um, Vice Chair McCullough stated the changes would bring those policies back into compliance. I did confirm, and we decided to take those policies together, and on a roll call of three to zero, that motion was approved. The next item that we took up was R O S 3-1.3, which is to, um, further work on the strategic plan. Superintendent Monares opened with the introduction of the list of individuals who were so far invited to the Strategic Planning Committee. Um, Vice Chair McCullough had asked administration report back to the Standing Committee once the people have been confirmed to participate. Dr. Monares stated, um, that the individuals that they wish to see on the list, um, and that if there was people that were missing that to please pass those names on to the administration, and they would be happy to send an invite to them. And then Doc, um, Deputy Superintendent Allen introduced Anne Spear from the Hanover Research Group, and she gave another overview on how they will be supporting the strategic plan. I had talked a little bit, um, I had asked her a question about the numbers of, um, individuals who were on our task force, um, if it was too large or what we saw, and she said that it was a good amount for how we're going to break up into the different areas of the strategic plan. And then Member Johnson, um, had asked some questions over the overall representation of the different cultures as part of the task force, and he was actually looking for one in particular, and, um, it was on there, but I know that we're looking at finalizing the list so that we can get that approved to begin the work. Um, Superintendent resp, um, let us know that the administration is requesting us at this point the ability to amend the representatives as recommended to ensure cultural representation in order to move this forward. So we're still looking at a complete list of people who we are writing to the task force, um, for the strategic plan. So I made a motion to approve the strategic plan, and we did approve, um, the co-chairs in order to move the, to move the strategic plan to the next step. So Vice Chair McCullough made a friendly amendment to add the receiving updates on future members, and on a roll call of three to zero, that motion was amended and approved. And then we took up 3-8-0.1, which was to consider the approval of the proposed 2023-2024 student handbook. I had stated that on page four, there needed to be some updates and returns of the Magnet School descriptions. Um, and Executive Director Ellen Kelly had stated that there was a policy, um, that they were looking at changing, um, some of the Magnet Schools that are considered Magnet Schools, still have the name of Magnet Schools, um, but don't actually follow the Magnet School protocol. Um, we, there were some changes that we made to the dress code policy. Um, I know Member McCullough had came in with some, there was, um, removing the information under the backpack policy, which was something that we had already done, and on that motion to amend that policy and remove that line was approved. Then I went on to page 15 in the section regarding inclusion of new expectations of school discipline. We also made the note that that needed to be changed, um, with the list of alternatives used before taking the route of discipline that the students received. There were, um, other areas that needed, um, further changes. So at that point, I had asked the administration, um, to actually get us a redline copy of the entire handbook just so that we can see those changes before we make that approval. So at that point, I, we ended, we stopped that portion of the meeting, and I made the motion to hold this item and request that the administration provide the redline copy of the entire handbook, um, that we'll be taking up at our next meeting, which is next week, and on a roll call of three to zero, those motions were approved collectively, and on a roll call of three to zero, the meeting adjourned at 5:52 PM.
Member Novick?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so first I have a process question. Um, I, I appreciate the, the sort of, we, we need a redline copy of the handbook in order to prove it, and I'm glad that that's happening. I'm glad it's going forward. You, the governance meets on the 21st. The, we don't actually meet again until July. So how do we get the handbook approved for the administration to actually then translate it and process it? Because it does need to be approved by the entire school committee before it can go forward. Through the chair to maybe administration, or possibly Member Clancy?
So I, so through the chair. I had asked that to the administration, and I was told that it would be able to be printed and ready to go for the start of the school year.
Okay, so that will work, even though we're not probably gonna be, we're not gonna have governance reporting out until July through the chaired administration? Is that a, I don't know who that question is posed to.
We will make that work.
Okay. I mean, I was also thinking, it sounds like we may be being called in for an, another kind of meeting, and if you need to add on a public meeting for us to do that, then I would suggest you do so. I would hate to have things filled out. Um, thank you. The other comment I had is somewhat related, honestly. Um, so the, in terms of the strategic plan, um, committee, um, I appreciate the information. I, I would just ask, generally speaking procedurally, um, and this is particularly true in governance, but I think there's experiences in other places. Um, if there's something that's coming out of subcommittee that is a document that we have to approve, if we could just make sure that we actually get the document again. I know in many cases, it has already been given to us earlier with the governance backup. Sometimes there are alterations that take place. If we can actually have that, whether it's the policy, or the list, or the whatever, um, that would be useful. A second thing is, I do actually wanna suggest that somebody just go through and do some quick editing in terms of the list. There's some misspellings, and, um, Mr. Allen has two last names, and, um, we should spell our state representative's last names correctly. Um, I, I would like to suggest, just thinking again of the sort of the process that we laid out, um, that rather than our formally appointing the cabinet to this portion, we know that once the sort of overall, big picture stuff comes out of this group, is approved by governance, is approved by the committee, that more granular, how do we get there, is absolutely gonna be the work of cabinet. Um, so I'd like to suggest that, and I, in no way want to sort of dismiss the role of the administrators in terms of doing this, that we shift their, them from sort of being on this list to there being that sort of second group, um, where it goes after this community group, with some administrative, uh, obviously the superintendent, probably the deputy superintendent are gonna be on here, um, doing their work that way, comes through here and then does that sort of cabinet section. Um, that would be my first suggestion. The second one, um, I know my colleagues understand that I'm sort of a stickler for Robert's rules and process and that kind of thing. This is a public body because they're advising a public body. We can't appoint co-chairs, um, because only one person can sit there and wield the gavel. Um, just from a very strict process perspective, we can't do that. Um, my suggestion is this. Uh, we did have a fairly lengthy conversation about the role of, um, WAC in terms of there being the sort of funding pass-through. In terms of our sort of drawing those very clear lines of that has been a role that they have played, I would suggest that, that that be their role, that their executive director be vice chair, and that the Research Bureau, which isn't actually doing any money stuff involved in this, actually fill the role of chair. So that we acknowledge that sort of partnership and so forth. We make sure that procedurally we actually just have a chair, because we gotta have a chair, and we also do that, also keep that clean line in terms of where's the money coming from and who's in charge. Um, so those would be my amendments to the report. Madam Chair.
Madam Superintendent, did you have anything on that?
No, we, the, um, the recommendation on the, the chair and the vice chair, um, I think it will not change process much. I think it will be similar. So I, I, I think that that would be fine. Hanover is the, the primary facilitator of this work. Um, I, we, we do not antici, I mean, we're not even gonna be able to get started on this until September because people are now on vacation, and so, um, but I, I also saw Member Mailman had a question, so maybe we go to her question.
Member Mailman?
Yep. Could, could you just remind me what WAC's financial arrangement is with the strategic plan right now?
They, um, Mr. Allen, I don't wanna use the wrong terms, so you correct me if I'm off. Um, they were the, um, they entered into the contract with Hanover, um, to support this work.
And for the chair, they also have some funding through Nellie Mae.
Yes, thank you for that slight detail there.
Little bit of money. Okay, thank you. Um, and then I don't understand the item that Tracy, that Member Novick suggested about separating administration from community. Was that the suggestion? I would be, I would not agree to that because I think that all in the room is like, people are hearing what people are saying, and I think that's a loss to not have people in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. So then we would take, um, Member Novick's two motions separately then. So the first motion would be the motion that Member Novick made where it separates out the administration team from the community team. So, oh, sorry. Member Camara?
Yeah, um, thank you to the chair. Is that like, cause I was trying to understand, is that per budget-wise that we separate, or is it like when we're?
This is just totally operational when it comes to the strategic plan. It's the, um, group of individuals who are going to be on the strategic plan committee. It includes some administrators on that list grouped together with the community right now, and Member Novick's motion is to make those two separate things and have the community do the work, and then go to administration for the next step as opposed to having the administration with the community as part of the planning. Correct, Member Novick? So we're gonna take that motion first. So, roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson? Yes.
And the Camara?
So I do agree that they should be together, so that's a no?
Correct.
That's a no?
Do you vote?
No.
And about repoting the vice chairs right now?
No, no, no. The first motion was the, the separating the administration from the community.
No.
No.
And O'Connell?
No.
And O'Connell?
Yes.
Is that a three-three vote? So the motion fails.
So then the next item is Member Novick's motion to utilize WAC as the chair and the other group as the vice chair. Oh, sorry, the other way around. I apologize. So now So now can we do a roll call on that? Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, can you please repeat that again?
Yeah, so this is, because you can't, because of the body, the way that we are, you can't have like co-chairs, so it's just more of a strategic, or not strategic, infrastructure adjustment to make one a chair and one the vice chair, but then to operate together. So the first is the? Research Bureau and then WAC is the vice chair. So that would be that motion. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
And now the motion would be to approve the report. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes.
Approved it, yes, I agree.
Yes.
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 And next up, we have the Standing Committee on School and Student Performance that met virtually on May sixteenth at five P M. Member Johnson?
Thank you. The Standing Committee of School and Student Performance met on May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three, virtually. The meeting was called to order at five oh-two. Present was myself, member O'Connell Novick, and Vice Chair Clancy was absent. Also present was Dr. Andrede, Director and Research, Director of Research and Accountability. We took up G B one dash nine-two, request that the administration establish a advisory committee to include personnel, community representatives and experts in the field of student health to discuss a later start time for secondary students or move time back thirty minutes for everyone. Dr. Andrede presented the findings regarding a student survey to determine the students' responsibilities following in school time. Within that, he, we, we talked, we had a discussion about what kids do after school, whether it's sports, if they have to take care of their siblings after school, if they have a job. We discussed different times and things that they may have to go to work. This also goes on top of having another report previously in regards to any conflicts with the times for athletic sporting events moving forward in the future. So after that discussion, I made the motion to file the item on a roll call of two to zero. The motion was approved and on a roll call two to zero, the motion to adjourn the meeting was approved. We adjourned at five fourteen P M. Thank you.
Any question? No. So. So then the motion is to call the roll to approve the report.
Yes.
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 Okay, next item is student advisory committee items. Consider approval of additional middle school sports programs throughout the district. Okay. Any questions? We're good? So we're gonna approve that? We do a formal roll call. Uh, member Kamara?
Yes, thank you. I just have a question about that. As we are approving additional middle school sports programs throughout the district, are we also thinking about supporting them materially-wise? Because I know like, sometimes having the full materials for these sports can also be an issue and a barrier to participation. So I want to understand if, as a district, if we're also including funding in there for, to support, you know, these sports with material supports and all? Because I remember being in middle school sports and we had nothing, so.
Dr. Morse? Short straw, come on up.
Through the chair, quick answer, yes.
So we are supporting them materialistically with whatever equipment and?
Absolutely. The equipment that they wouldn't even be included. Yes.
Okay, so I would like, I would like to see that, but thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, consider the approval of the North Quadrant twenty-twenty-three enrichment grant in the UMass Chan Medical School in the amount of thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Next time is request the administration to ensure full and fair elections that are held in a timely fashion for the position of school committee students, advisory member of each high school, assuming that the rights and responsibility of such position are fully forwarded to the student body. Further request that the administration provide for the school committee student advisory council to meet before at the end of the school to elect a chair and who serves the ex officio member of the Worcester School Committee next school year. Member Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through the chair to administration, do we have an update since this? They were supposed to have met and it seems as if they would have also elected their ex officio member? Maybe we don't know. Do we know?
Madam Superintendent? Come on down.
The update hasn't been given to me directly, so that's why I'm looking at Ashley.
So we have, we have elected all of the members from individual schools. We have put out an email to the body. They have gotten candidates for the ex officio and the vote is being held tomorrow. So tomorrow we will have the ex officio elected.
Okay, thank you. Could I just ask two things? First, we kind of fell off the wagon in terms of not just having them here, which sometimes does happen, which is why I filed the item, but also we're legally required as a body to meet with all of them every other month. So can I ask, before we get into next school year, if we just establish those dates at the beginning of the year, that it's gonna be, you know, whatever, the first week of, the first meeting in October, the first meeting in December, whatever it is? So that everybody knows, we know, they know, it's on everybody's calendar and they then have the prep time to get ready for their part of the meeting and that kind of thing? That'd be my first request. The other request is generally we line up the elected ones with, the elected students with mentors on the school committee. If I could ask that we do that before we lose them on Tuesday, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. All set? So on those motions, all those in favor, opposed, so ordered? Okay.
That's a good idea.
You're good? Next time is to consider exploring the hiring of athletic trainers for high school athletics. Member McCullough?
Thank you. So this was a past item that I had filed that came up again during budget at our last meeting. And now we have this backup here that gives us some information. And while I do understand that we do utilize, you know, whether it be E M Ts, trainers, physicians, and that we do that now currently with a practice that costs us about twenty-one thousand dollars a year, the ask was really looking for athletic trainers specifically. And now I know that we're already in the middle of budget and that I just ask that administration and that this goes, you know, possibly back to finance for next year to consider in the first quarter to take a look at this and if there's a possibility, whether it be using our current practice, but also having a few athletic trainers, if that's going to be possible as we move forward.
Okay, we'll send that to the administration. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered? No, I'm sorry, finance, right? Where's it gonna go? Finance, finance, yeah. We're gonna send that to finance. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered? Explore the feasibility of increasing the day-to-day substitute rate for licensed retired educators. Member McCullough?
Also a past item, so I appreciate the backup that was given to us from Dr. Ku to possibly explore a different rate for retired teachers willing to commit to a certain amount of time. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll send that to the administration. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered? Request approval removing the medical waiting rooms. C N A's. Any opposition? So remove those. Everybody all set? We'll do a roll call. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, consider the approval and update to the job description of the certified instructor for junior reserve officers training corps in the Air Force. Any questions? No questions? Roll, roll call. Do you have questions? So hang on one second. Uh, member Mailman?
Was, was there much of a change with this, having not known the last one? Was the, or did we not have one maybe, or does anybody know?
Dr. Q?
Dr. Ku.
So through the chair, we did have a previous one, but it wasn't specific to each of the different categories.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. To review the independent accountants' report on applying agreed-upon procedures for the DESI end-of-year fiscal year for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. Any questions? Seeing none?
It needs to get referred so that we can do it there.
Yep. Okay, let's send that to finance. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered? Consider renaming St. Casimir's to Dr. Michael O'Neill program at the alternative school. Member Clancy?
Thank you. So through the chair, I had actually brought this item to this body today, just because we know Dr. O'Neill is retiring after forty-plus years in this district, not just in this district, but at the St. Casimir's Alternative School. So I'm asking that we look at naming the program at the alternative school. And I know Dr. Manares had spoken before about even calling it the alternative school, possibly looking at that. But I'm looking at, looking, renaming it the Dr. O'Neill Program at Worcester Alternative. Dr. O'Neill has had an impact on generations of students in this city, and I have witnessed that firsthand for the last seventeen years. It's about honoring a man who has made it his life work to work with the students in the city of Worcester and in a role that I think will be very hard to fill. So that is what I'm asking, that we look at renaming the program, the Dr. O'Neill Program at Worcester Alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kamara?
Thank you. So one of the things that I was really moved by during the graduations, especially at South High graduation, when the class valedictorian stood there and spoke multiple various languages that are representative of our students. Not only did he speak those languages, but he, the pronunciations were great. So then. And so then when we look in the district with regards to when we say we have diversity and, and equity, I'm often confused by that. I've had like, you know, people reach out to me about this item while I have not had the opportunity to work with Dr. O'Neill for multiple years or have gotten to know him. I have, you know, had correspondence with him and I do acknowledge all the work that he's done within this district. But for me, I think this item calls together the question of equity in our district and how we are going to be processing, how we edit or change names of our, of programs or schools in our district, especially with regards to some, like a time when I was at a event with, like with the conversation around like Chandler Magnet and La Familia that was on the table. And very little has been done about that with regards to hearing parents out in terms of name, name changes. I'm also new to this work, but I do understand from what I've gathered in the community, a question that was asked to me was whether also this is like a conflict of interest or what like, or how can we improve our work with the community by including the voice of community members or students that can support us should we want to edit or rename schools in our district? I'm, so my, my question here and my comment here is more so on questioning our practices on how things are done and then trying to get, gain some understanding with regards to what people have asked me. And it's unfortunate that people didn't come to speak today, but this was something that was kind of like put on my radar and I wanted to ask as a member of the school committee.
Okay, we've done it a couple of ways. We've done it, it usually goes to the school. One of the groups in the school, the school board or parents group or, or the school, we've done it where the school committee has done it too in the past. So. So this is a process that involves the schools when we do this. Okay?
Thank you.
Member Novick?
The answer is that we have a policy. I'm glad you asked the question because we can't actually just name something after only one evening after someone. And we are required by our policy to involve the voice of the community. In fact, the first, the first sort of mention of it at the school committee is then supposed to open a public comment process. So it's policy F F. I'm not gonna read it all, but I do think there's a couple of things here that are worth us considering. It opens, naming a school facility is an important matter that deserves thoughtful attention. Personal prejudice or favoritism, political pressure or temporary popularity should not be an influence in choosing a name for a school, a portion of a school or a portion of school grounds. Wherever possible, the wishes of the community, including parents and students, should be considered in naming school facilities. It does go down in that it says, when the opportunity to name or dedicate a new school or school-related property, structure or facility is forthcoming, an orderly procedure will be communicated at the school committee meeting. The committee's agendas should clearly reflect the intent to consider, review and vote on naming opportunities. The written request should specify the intent of the requister and the reason why this particular name would fit the facility. It should offer appropriate background information on the purpose or organization after which the facility will be named. There's a section here about financial requests. And then finally, it says, following the submission of a naming request, the school committee chair will specify a consideration period that allows for public comment, following which the committee will deliberate and vote on the name. Now I would only add to that, Mr. Chair, that my understanding is that the administration is actually going through a review process of our alternative sort of programs and processes and facilities and everything. It does seem to me, while I entirely understand member Clancy's point in terms of this being the close of a, of a very long career with the Worcester Public Schools, that to sort of move forward while we know that there's sort of changes in the works would perhaps be premature. And I wonder, I noticed that the referral was actually to administration rather than, say, to a subcommittee. I do wonder if this is something where we should be effectively referring it to administration with the idea that there's a lot going on with the alternative programs and this sort of gets folded into whatever that conversation is. I would defer to the administration on that, though.
Okay, I think we can have a public comment period here and we can do a schedule over the next, probably I should have to wait to probably make sure people are back after the summer.
Okay, but Mr. Chair, what I was suggesting is that we're actually premature in even doing that because the administration is actually going through a review of whether or not we're even gonna have the same programs anymore. So the referral was actually to administration and I was gonna say, it seems like moving forward with naming on something is actually too early because we don't know if we're actually even gonna have these programs anymore.
We're gonna eliminate the program? Madam Superintendent? It's not like it's funny, I'm asking the question.
The program is?
The program is not being eliminated, and make that very clear. What is happening is, um, we have currently the Rennie Center who is looking at all of our alternative settings, and they're gonna make some recommendations to us. So what I believe member Novak is saying is, well, perhaps we just put a pause while, until we receive that, that report, which should be very soon. We anticipate, um, sometime this month, we're midway through the month, um, we'll have more information, so it's not too far down the road.
So you're gonna get it this month?
By the end of this month, we're supposed to receive it.
Okay, we're gonna wait for that. Okay, but I think Dr. O'Neill meets all those requirements that we're read, so, but, uh, we will, uh, send that to the administration, then we'll have a public comment period after that.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, the, 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 the policy is actually not met in terms of the request at this point.
I didn't say it was. I said, we asked, we're gonna send it to the administration, and we'll go through the process and set some dates.
We haven't received what we need to in order for it to formal, be a formal submission of a request. So we actually can't actually do that yet because we haven't actually met the requirement of the policy to open the public comment part.
That's what I said we're gonna do. We're gonna schedule those and then move on in the future. Okay, so we'll send that to the administration, we'll go from there when we get back. I think I said that three times. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna send that to the administration. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay. We're waiting now, we're at this. To consider creating a policy regarding graduation ceremonies and student participation. Member Clancy?
Thank you. Um, so through the administration, this came to me actually out of a student who was unable to attend graduation at Worcester Tech this year. Um, and you'll see I have another item regarding this as well. So what I'm asking at this point is that administration consider holding a graduation ceremony for our students who are participating in summer school in order to receive their high school diploma, and that we do that towards the end of the summer school session, and I'm thinking probably mid to early, mid, mid to early August. Thank you.
Just send that to your committee? I'm sorry, I was talking.
I was asking that we send it to administration for a graduation ceremony in August.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. To consider a resolution proposed by the Peabody School Committee for the-
Wait, I'm sorry, Mayor Petty?
Did I skip one?
We need to back up. Member, um, Clancy? That's a different one? That's it?
I am so sorry. That was supposed to be two separate items.
They are two separate items. So there's a different one that you have on the summer?
Yes, there was a summer formal, um, so this- I see that now. Okay, I'm sorry. So this one, sorry, through the chair, this one is to take a look at our, um, policies and procedures regarding students who are able to walk at graduation. Um, I, again, it was due to a student at Worcester Tech who was unable to walk due past understandings that schools have had, and come to find out, I've been talking to different schools, and everyone has, seems to have a different process on how students can walk and can't walk. Um, so I think that we need to formalize something and make a policy regarding students who are able to attend our graduation ceremonies in June. Thank you.
Okay. So back where I was. Governance. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Okay, we are on consider a resolution proposed by the Peabody School Committee for the 2023 MASC Delegate Assembly regarding stop bomb, stop bomb cameras. Uh, member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As my colleagues are aware, um, due to action by this committee, um, Senator Michael Moore actually proposed a bill, um, that is among those pending in the, um, Education Committee regarding the use of, um, cameras on our stop-bomb school buses to issue tickets. This is part of that same activism. Um, the Peabody School Committee has proposed this to go before the, um, MASC 2023 Delegate Assembly. Um, obviously, more committees passing the same resolution than lends weight to that potentially actually being passed and becoming the policy of the state association. Thank you.
Okay, are we all good? So do a roll call on that.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, to create a finance and operations focus on building repairs and maintenance for the coming year similar to our focus here on transportation. Member Mailman?
Just a couple of brief comments. I, I think our transportation, um, efforts and, and continuous, um, review was very effective, and, um, I would like to see us do the same kind of thing in finance and operations on building repair and maintenance. I mean, it's been, Mary Keef wrote an article the other day, the city, you know, on capital items, the city manager and the superintendent are meeting with the CFOs to, to do something. We have brand-new folks, um, that I think are here or were here, um, in this department, and I think a lot lagged this year because we didn't have the right thing. And I think some of the, it seemed to me, just listening to the reports that we did get on a quarterly basis, that some of it is because we don't have, it could be staffing issues too. So the focus on, um, you know, hiring bus drivers or whatever was continuous, and I think it helped to move the dime. So I'd like to see us consider that in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Send that to committee. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next up is to consider what field trips aligned with state standards should be the common experience of all Worcester Public students. Member Novak?
As it reads.
As it reads?
Yeah.
Was that you? I'm sorry.
No, no, there were two items that are similar, but, um,
Oh, okay.
I was just gonna say do them together, but.
Okay, uh, so was it as it reads? Oh, okay, do them together. Review the local field trip, uh, opportunities, particularly with those state and local veteran, war memorials to increase middle school civics learning opportunities. So both of those as it reads, and, uh, those in favor, opposed, so ordered. To consider a attached resolution for the passengers' invitation. Uh, member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And meaning in no way to steal your thunder because I know that you'll issue a similar declaration in September when Worcester generally celebrates pride. Um, given, um, the circumstances of the country right now, um, and given the Human Rights Commission actually, um, issuing effectively a, kind of a warning for LGBTQIA people for the United States of America. Um, and then particularly, the, the statistic that struck me, um, which is cited in here, um, that, uh, in the National Survey of Mental Health from the Trevor Project, nine out of ten LGBTQIA Massachusetts students said that the current, um, attitude in the country was affecting their mental health. Um, it struck me, Mr. Chair, that we really, um, need as a committee to just be very public in our support for our students. Um, the other thing I did want to add as a side note is that, um, due to the recent decision, uh, Supreme Judicial Court decision against the city of Boston, um, it's important that we as a body take a public policy position if we intend to do things like fly a flag. Um, so this also then provides for that legally as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll do a roll call on that. Roll call. You want to speak on? Member Kamara?
So, um, thank you so much, and I want to thank the administration and my colleague, um, for this item. I also want to thank the administration for posting on the Worcester Public Schools website, um, about Pride Month, um, because I saw that on the website. I also want to thank, um, the city for also, um, doing works in that level. So I think that this is a great item, but I wish we're having more conversation about the LGBTQ children, um, students in our district, um, particularly, I'm curious to understand, when was the last time that we, um, pulled in the data and report on their academics and social emotional wellbeing? Because I know I've asked for bullying reports and stuff like that, but I would like to understand, um, when we've done that and, um, and-
Member, I mean, uh, Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair. So it might be very challenging to report how that group of students are doing because they have, we don't track that kind of, um, information. It would be self-reported by the child. We don't put it in our student information system like that. So for us to be able to disaggregate the data in that manner would be challenging. It would be more through maybe any kind of student, um, um, what's the word I'm looking for? A, a student body group that each school, each high school most specifically might have, and maybe we can do some anecdotal type of things. Um, I would want us to be very, um, kind of thoughtful about, um, our, our students that, um, you know, that, that identify in such manner, because I wouldn't want them to be put in any kind of situation. So I understand what you're, um, what you would like to see. I think it's, it comes from a very good place. Allow us to give some time to think about how we might be able to update the committee, um, while still, um, really making sure that we're keeping our, our scholars safe.
Thank you. And so I, with that in mind, I think I would appreciate, um, any kind of, you know, supports that you just mentioned, um, that to shine light on any ways in which that's official, we can continue to, um, support children in our district that are of LGBTQ, uh, because I think it is within our previous school committee members, if they weren't, to be able to support them policy level-wise.
Absolutely.
And I think that's, um, very commendable. Uh, so, and my other question, I'm, I'm very curious, um, like, uh, do we fly flags in the city, in our public schools?
We don't make, we, we have not, so this, this resolution gives, kind of allows that to be done on a school-wide level, right? Um, an individual teacher might choose to put something in their classroom, um, and this again gives more, um, permission. But it hasn't been something we've said do or do not do, at least along, as long as I have been here. So this resolution then gives some more parameters to people.
Okay.
We'll fly the flag in City Hall anyways in September.
I'm sorry?
We'll fly the flag at City Hall in front in September.
Right, okay, okay.
Okay. So it's a resolution, so we'll do a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
And the Mailman? Member McCullough? We're gonna move the roll call. We'll finish and go back.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Do you have another question, though?
Yeah.
Member Kamara?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, so, so I wanted to also ask, like, are we then, um, opening it up for flags, um, other flags in the district in the, in our, the public schools? I, I'm, I'm confused on this. I don't know what this, what the, um, item is asking for.
Don't know the answer to that. Member Novak?
So the item itself is simply the resolution, right, which is, is a pride resolution and has language that, um, therefore be it resolved that the Worcester School Committee do recognize celebrations of pride in June and throughout the year, through the flying of appropriate flags and other demonstrations of the safe and welcoming environment we intend to foster in the Worcester Public Schools. So this is specifically about pride and progress flags, um, and other such demonstrations. That is all that it is. Um, we, I will, if I could opine for a moment, Mr. Chair, will say this, that the recent, um, decision that was handed down against the city of Boston, um, from every legal, um, guidance I have seen, has said that public bodies need to adopt, um, positions themselves if there are going to be any kinds of demonstrations that are done by those, those public bodies. So in other words, if we were going to, if we were going to provide for the flying of any other flag besides, say, the American flag or the Massachusetts one, we would want to adopt that as a policy position, because if we just sort of say we take references or recommendations, we have to take them all. That was the decision against the city of Boston.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Uh, to work with the administration, organize a formal recognition for seniors who graduate following summer school completion. Member Clancy?
As it reads, thank you.
Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. To revise district policy KHB regarding advertising. Uh, member Novak?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. It was recently brought to my attention that our, um, advertising policy we adopted specifically with regard, um, to Foley Stadium and the Commerce Field, and that meant that we didn't have an advertising policy, um, across the district for all of our properties. Um, we do actually need to have legal, um, language around what can be displayed on school property, um, and what cannot, and, um, that's really all this is doing.
Okay. Send that to the administration. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered.
To go to governance, I think.
Either one. Do we need to send it to an attorney just to write something out?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I can't hear you.
Should we, should we have an attorney look at it, just recommend, write something up for us, or you just want, you just want to send it right to governance? We can do that. You want it in governance? Yep.
I'm fine with it. I'm sure.
Okay, we'll send it to governance. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Assume approval of salary adjustment in non-representative, uh, position for fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-six. All set? Those, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. To consider approval of salary adjustments to non-representative administrative positions for twenty-three to twenty-six. Member Novak?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is slightly tangential, um, but many districts have, um, a, a sort of a parameter that's adopted by the school committee of, um, you know, people who have particular levels of positions have salaries that range within this and this, and they have vacations that are this, and, and they have, you know, there's a standard package effectively. Worcester has never done this, um, but it does mean that, first of all, I end up feeling a little bit in the dark in terms of what we're doing here. But also, eh, there is this sort of tension in terms of the, the, um, allocation of resources versus making sure that administration has their parameters. So I just wanted to mention that. I don't want to sort of overturn the abacogram in support of the motion, um, but it, it, I, if we could have a conversation about that at some point, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, roll call?
Mayor Petty, if I could just speak to that real quick? We actually are, um, developing that and, um, systematizing it when we've got it finalized. We will bring it forward to the committee, um, so that you're aware of these, these said parameters.
Okay. Roll call? She walked off.
Yes.
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 Yes. To see approval of the, uh, contract for up to five years for streaming services with the NFHS Network School Broadcast Program. Okay, are we all set with this one? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Next one is consider the approval of the job description for a communication coordinator.
Just procedurally speaking, Mr. Chair, can I suggest that we hold these two to take with that actual section of the budget, which is coming, um, in the upcoming salary sections? There's two job descriptions here. We just procedurally-
We can send, we can send that to budget, okay?
We can just take it up at the same time.
Yeah, so send that to budget. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is to consider approval of the innovation school renewal, renewal plans. Member Novak?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, and I didn't get a chance to check to see if it got changed in the updated agenda. Generally, process-wise, those historically have gone to school and student performance rather than to TLSS. I'm not looking for a turf war. I actually don't care, um, but they, they usually are sort of a one-off. They're done at one committee meeting. Uh, they all happen at the same time. I did have a conversation with you, with Vice Chair Johnson, so I'm not pulling a fast one on him here. Um, so that would be my suggestion for a referral, but again, not looking to fight about it.
That's where they had gone in the past.
Member Mailman?
I, not having done this before, why would it go to accountability versus teaching and learning? Like, what was the thinking before?
Is that where, like, this is always on there?
Did you decide that, Joe?
I'm fine either one, so, member Novak, do you have a-
It just seemed like it was teaching and learning.
Answer. Um, so, Mr. Chair, it's, um, So, Mr. Chair, it's, I mean, in part, honestly, it's because the innovation plans came out as part of the 2011 Act relative to the achievement gap. They were intended to be a way that a school very much self-directed its own improvement process, and in reference to the various kinds of data, actually decided which kinds of freedoms from the district-level decision-making it wanted to have and/or continued. And that is the subcommittee in which we traditionally have had those, what data do we have, how are we improving, what are we doing differently, kinds of conversations.
Okay. Okay, those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next up is to consider sending letters of support to the Mass legislature in support of the Thrive Act.
What, Joe, you can sit next to me?
Mayor Petty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Thrive Act, I'm just going to read the last two paragraphs. This is about the MCAS testing and how it's done. And resolved that the Worcester School Committee urged the state legislature to pass the Thrive Act and in the use of MCAS tests as a graduation requirement for purposes of placing school districts, where individual schools in the state of receivership be resolved to Massachusetts evolve the alternative to the high-stick MCAS test. I think I've come full around on this, halfway around, I should say, but I was a big supporter of the MCAS. I think there's something good about it, and my first guy became his mayor. I think people tried to eliminate this before, several years ago, but I think for the, not for the right reasons. And after being the mayor and after seeing the impact on students when it comes to graduations, after seeing the impact on our principals and the angst in their face and the students at the same time, and the pressure. Now, there was a, there was a study that came out, I didn't get a chance to read, I think it was from the CDC today, talking about one in five young people, which would include, I would assume, high school, junior high, and younger, and definitely college and on, have some type of mental health issues here in the United States, and there's this high suicide rate, and not planning to do MCAS, but that it's a reality. We know what we experienced, we talked about this, mental health issues in our children that we support here in the school committee, prior to the Dr. Mares coming to the City of Worcester. And there's been a focus on that from the mayor's office, from Maggie Castile, Public Health, Dr. Mares and her team, and I just don't think it does what it's supposed to do. And now, it also says, resolve the Massachusetts develop an alternative. Now, there should be some type of measurement, there's no question about that. We can't just say no measurement and just walk away, whatever that may be, whether it's devolved, it should be substantial, so we can help our students learn and move on. But to prevent a kid on the 10th grade, no, he's not going to graduate. It just sends a message that, it's taken me a long time probably to learn this and see this in action, but something that needs to be done, something that needs to be looked at. And again, to be very clear, we're not saying there's not going to be any measurements of these, of our children here in the Worcester Public Schools, of our students. I think that's important, but to hold them back, and I find that hard, especially, but we did statistical, we got a statistical feedback, I bet that student who then passed the 10th grade, I wonder what the percentage is, that never graduated anyways, right? And never passed that test, I bet it's pretty high. So, and that doesn't help the student, in the sense of trying to find a job or trying to go further their education. So, I think there's something I'm supportive, and this asks my colleagues that we support this. There's a lot of equity issues, and we talked about that in this too. You look at the different people, different groups of people who don't do well on this. So, I think that's an issue that needs to be resolved also. So, whatever's done at the state level, some real thought has to be put into it, and how that impacts the students across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Member Kamara?
I'm going to be the skunk of the garden party, Mr. Chair. So, this is House 495, House Bill 495. The language of House Bill 495 doesn't actually eliminate the MCAS. The only thing that it changes, currently Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 69, which is what we reference when we do the MCAS, is it says, the competency determination, which is what the MCAS is in Massachusetts, is a competency determination for high school graduation. At this point, it says, in the areas of mathematics, science and technology, history and social studies, foreign languages and English. The only alteration that the Thrive Act makes to Chapter 69 is it changes that to mathematics, science and technology and English. It does not eliminate the competency determination. It actually doesn't even change the language in terms of the competency determination, so it really doesn't eliminate the MCAS. Now, the MCAS is actually not in Massachusetts General Law, it just happens to be what the department uses for the competency determination. If the department, if the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education wanted tomorrow to use something else, they could. It isn't actually a question of law, and as much as I appreciate your comments, Mr. Chair, the Thrive Act doesn't actually eliminate the MCAS, that's not actually what the language of the bill does. The other thing is that I have paid a lot of attention to state receivership. I was there the night that Pollock was voted into receivership. I was there the night that Southbridge was voted into receivership. I actually worked with the Southbridge School Committee. And there's not really a strong reformation here of the receivership process either. I have major issues with the receivership process, most notably that there's no exit, which the Thrive Act starts to look at, but it doesn't actually get there. And the other thing is that while the bill puts into place a study commission for an alternative to the MCAS, it doesn't actually effectively say, and then we're going to do this. It just leaves in place, honestly, a narrower parameter, which is what's sort of ironic to me, because the complaint about the MCAS is that it, among the complaints about the MCAS, has been that it narrows the curriculum. Well, we're substituting language that actually has a wider array of subjects to something that's narrower. I hadn't actually read the Thrive Act until this showed up on our agenda. I was kind of putting it off. I was sort of hoping that it did what it said. But I appreciate the request from the EAW, and I appreciate even the thoughts behind it, but the bill doesn't do what the bill, what the presentation says that it would do, and so I'll be voting in opposition.
Member Kamara?
I want to thank you, Mayor, I want to also thank my colleague. So, it's, and I think your comments are worthy too. So, one thing I would like to understand, is it then, can we, as school committee members, like, write a letter or to include, like, what Tracy was just talking about, to, so that we bridge that gap, so that the MCAS actually, so that the bill can actually, because I know it will go through our whole process, but do we have a letter that at least opens it up? Is that, is there a process?
Well, you can write your own letter and, in support of, with some recommendations of changes, if that's what you're asking.
Right, yes.
And, and this is probably a start in my mind, you got to start somewhere, so this will be a long process. This is like, this ain't happening tomorrow.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and, so did I answer your question? So, you can write a letter with some suggested change if you'd like, or we can...
But can our, what I'm asking is that this letter of support, can that letter also include language in it?
Those suggestions?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I guess my only other comment, like, I understand, like, you know, this is a start, but I think is a start in the right direction. I know the Worcester Education Collaborative, WEC, they've been doing a lot of forums on this, to kind of educate people in the community about what's going on with the MCAS and some other options and stuff, so I, I think this is a start in the right direction to whatever we may get in the future to come. Thank you.
Member Mailman?
Okay. So, so this is at the very beginning stage, so there will be amendments, there will be, it'll go on and on, so we could, so the suggestion by Member Kamara is like an amendment to your item?
Yeah, we can work on something.
You'd accept a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
And then just one last question. So, this Thrive Act does not get rid of the graduation requirement? Like, why don't people know that? Okay. Okay, I like what she said. Thank you.
Like I said, it's a start, so I'm going with it. Okay, roll call.
Yes.
With the amendment?
Within a minute.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, with the amendment.
Yes.
No.
Yes. Okay. Takes care of that. So, we're going to go back into budget? What's that? Can't wait? Is that a? Looks like you're, there's no, no swagger coming down there. Okay. We are on, let me get my budget book. Quirks, no, we're on the quirks. We're on school, school clerical salaries on page 206. Page 206. We all sat there? Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. We are on non-instructional support salaries on page 207. Member Novak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I do just want to say that I appreciate the attention that administration is paying to the implementation of Workday, and that being something that's actually going to require additional staffing. I am always concerned when there's something that's behind the scenes and largely invisible to people, and at the same time supports so much, that there isn't any structural support going into it. And so, I appreciate seeing that increase here in terms of what we're doing going forward. Thanks.
Okay. Those in favor, opposed, so ordered. Next is crossing guard salaries on page 210.
Hang on, I'm sorry, there were multiple pages there. And we also held an item to take up with this account.
What's that?
I'm sorry, we actually, we held the communications positions to take up with this account, and I neglected to realize that this.
Oh, the non-instructional, you mean?
Yes, I'm sorry. I neglected to realize that it ran to page 209. So, Mr. Chair, the, the position of, in communications, which was long advocated for by my colleague, Member McCullough, was something that I think there was general agreement, that the community needed, that the district needed, that the school committee supported. And then the movement within the administration to take some segments that we already have, between the television section and also the website coordination and putting that under that department was fine. I have thought about this, I have read the reviews, I've had conversations, I've read the position descriptions, and I cannot support, I do not support, having two additional communications positions. I don't actually support having additional communications positions. I think that we have had since February someone actually fulfilling this role, and I think that's wonderful, and I appreciate the work that's being done there, but this is a, this is a vast expansion, very, very quickly, and I, I don't think that it is needed, I don't think it is necessary. And more than that, Mr. Chair, I don't think that it is both the highest and best use of the money, and also, it's the kind of addition that concerns me in terms of kind of whose voices are heard at the table. And so, my motion, Mr. Chair, is to transfer $170,000 from this account to the paraprofessional account, which would also then bring us to the $900,000 that would be necessary to fulfill the 20 paraprofessionals.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question.
Member Kamara for, or Member Mailman?
Yeah, thank you, thank you to the chair. Thank you. So, I want to say I commend the work that's been done already with this job description, you know, that we have had for the communication, but I do think that there is some merit in the fact that we can at least have an additional person, I think I saw a specialist somewhere, that was a specialist, right, that will do content, creation. I mean, one person is great, right, but then we have a large school district, and I'm so excited of all the things I, we see on social media, but I'm pretty sure it gets hectic, so I would like to understand more with regards to how we can make this possible, because I think at least another position to help and to really dig into even the website that we have not even, I don't know where we with this website, to be honest. So, yeah, I just want some clarification over here. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
So, thank you for the question. I'm going to first start with the proposal on the two positions. When the new communications officer started, knowing that this individual had the experience of doing communication for a large school district and then smaller ones, and being in the field for a couple of decades now, I told them, I'm not sure what you need, you'll know what you need before we do, so assess what's going on, what strengths we have, what are some opportunities that would be necessary for you to really take a communications office to the highest level. And so, this was the recommendation that came back. And these two positions, communications specialist and a digital content specialist, would then take the communications office really to four people in total. The chief communications officer, our current position, which is our online media specialist, webmaster, and then these two other positions. The communication specialist is really going to, when we think about communications, we think about it from the external facing, which is the engagement with our media sources, of course, social media today, and then kind of crisis management, as things pop up at schools, getting information to the schools, the talking points that our leaders need to feel confident, and that's the work that's been going on since Mr. O'Brien started. But we haven't been, and then he does small touchpoints on things like the website. So, we're in the process of looking at, or looking at vendors, and then we will be refining our website. Of course, we're going to need to train people on that, and then do the constant monitoring of that to make sure that we're in compliance. He's just getting started on that work. This digital content specialist will be instrumental in making sure that the website stays compliant with the various requirements that we have, both at a federal level and a state level, most specifically around accessibility. And when we looked at what districts comparable to our size have, they are, they have anywhere from six to 13 people running their communications. We don't, we think that that's pretty excessive, but in today's day and age, we do believe that these two positions would be essential for where the, not where the websites, not where our communications is at, but where we want to take it, so we can continue doing what we're doing, and we'll get as much as we can out of, out of the work, or we can do a lot more with some additional supports. What we have not, and what I want to remind us all of, there's the communications officer who does the strategy, the oversight, making sure that things are accessible, and not just accessible in language, but like, the kind of language that our families, that would make sense to our families, right? So, we tend to talk in very educational terms, and that doesn't speak to our families. And so, we need someone. And so we need someone who is training us and reworking us so that we can really do the kind of communication that our parents are asking for, that our community is asking for. And that's what came... That's a big thing that came out of the listening and learning tour, right? Engagement and two-way communication. Another element that we're working on is really streamlining all the different ways that we currently and that our schools currently communicate with our families. We have so many different apps, right? Because we haven't had any office doing oversight on it and then training and monitoring and keeping people updated. So we've got Remind. We've got Class Dojo. We've got... I don't even know. Like, give me some... A few more. I mean, they just go on and on and on. It drives our parents crazy because it's so much that we've lost the purpose of communication. And so we are taking a step back, looking for something that will work for everybody. And then that will be another new piece that we'll be... We'll have to not only train on, but provide constant monitoring and oversight on. So those are the reasons why we are requesting these two positions. Is that... Did I answer your question, Member... Okay.
Yeah. And, okay. And so I'm seeing something here that I wanted to, just for clarification. Print slash digital document center. Is it that we're printing magazines to go out to families? Because I have been in some school districts when I was in my graduate program in White Plains, New York, where the school district sent out a magazine to the entire people of that area? And I don't think that's something that I have seen in this district. So is that what this means?
We... We want to do those type of things. We have not done that. So I'm not sure which part you're looking at. Are you looking at the job description itself?
Page 31. Yeah, so it's just like updated by Dan.
So we have a print... A person who does the printing in our district. They do the handbook, for example, and they do those kind of things.
Oh, that's what... Okay.
So that might be what you're referring. But to your point, I know exactly what you're talking about. It's kind of like a state of the district, if you will, and just really nice information to share the great things going on in the district. We don't have anyone... We don't do that right now. We don't have anyone to do that. And our families deserve to have that.
And I have a follow-up. I'm sorry. So is it that... So this is two additional, and this is what you guys are asking for. And then I think my colleague was mentioning... So I'm okay... I'm not too sure. I do know that this work is a lot, like social media, digital content is a lot for one person. Like, you could be a Superman. It's still a lot for one person. So I don't know if there's a way we can negotiate to a happy medium? Yeah?
We are willing to listen to the different views of the school committee and find something.
Thank you.
Member Mailman?
We have had communications people in this district before. Yes, we have. Somebody named Jennifer Roy was one person. We have had people in this role before. What I'm listening to and what I believe this district is about is to taking things to a different level. So I am more in line with supporting... Because some of these jobs that are talked about in here are gonna get done by somebody. So it's probably gonna be somebody in Sarah's department or somebody else that's gonna have to do this stuff. So... I mean, I have a sense that we... That I want to support some really strong... Something different than what we've had before. And I'm not saying... I won't use names anymore because there's been other names, too. But... So I would like a compromised position. And, you know, I mean, if we're trying to get everybody in, you know, the kindergarten classrooms, then we'll have to find it somewhere else. But I think this is really important work. And so I'm in favor of us trying to think about it in a different way so that we keep these positions or one of these positions or rewrite it or whatever.
Okay. What's that? Member Clancy?
Thank you. And listening to... One question I do have. So one of these job descriptions does not have a pay scale on it, and one does. So I'm just curious. Are they both... Are we both allotting $80,000 to $90,000 a year for these two positions each?
Yes.
Sign me up. All right. I would... I'm looking at... I understand we have said it for... Since I've been on the school committee, communication, communication. And I will agree with my colleagues. If there is somehow we can maybe combine these, because I see a lot of dual processes in place in both of these job descriptions, and starting there and see how things go. I just can see $90,000 spent in the classroom. Right now is more important to get those IAs in the kindergarten level.
Member McCullough?
Thank you. And I would also support the one position. I do see the value. I understand. And I understand that we're trying to build towards the future. And if we could start off with the one this year and then explore for the next year where we're at and what we may need here, I certainly understand that we're expecting a lot out of one person right now. But, you know, I do agree that I think if we could start off with one additional position and then continue to grow from there, I know that we want us to look at everything within our schools and the importance of what's being shared on the individual school sites and, you know, whether it's newsletters homes or through apps, as you mentioned. I think those things are very important. And you're absolutely right. Since day one that you've been here through your interview process, that's what we talked about, communication and how we're representing the district and how we really want to highlight the wonderful successes in the district and make our families feel part of what's going on. And to Member Kamara's point, I absolutely agree. I've really enjoyed how much more we have out there on social media and in the press and how that's really starting to elevate what's going on and really highlighting some of the incredible things going on in our schools and with our educators, faculty, and students. So I would like to see us start off with one for this year and then see where our needs are for next fiscal year.
Okay. So from my perspective, I'm talking to Superintendent... Talking to the superintendent about this. And being a part of this for the last over 10 years. And I know we had communications, but not really before. It wasn't specialized. It was government relations. It was a number... It was like 10 different jobs, I think, if I remember right completely. It was never set up right, I'll put it that way. Yeah. And I see the work that's being done by one person right now. And I'm so happy with the work. When I pick up the paper, when I see the comments from parents, whether it be on some stuff on social media, everything is just going in the right direction. And it's a proactive versus, I suppose, reactive. And... But what's gonna happen is it's gonna be reactive, right? If we don't support one or two of these positions, then we'll never get ahead. I think for the first time, and I appreciate the work Moll McCullough did on this in trying to push for communications persons, which we got, something we've been talking about, I think, during the hiring process, too, how important this was to us. And I think I'm with Sue Mailman, Member Mailman, on this, that... And this brings us to another level, in my mind. And... But we'll see where this goes. But I think we're all on the same page here. But this is an important position. I know it's not in the classroom. I understand that. But we've undersold ourself for so many years, you know? And all the good stuff that these people do right here in this room and all those teachers, we've never got the word out. It's just been so frustrating. And all the good stuff this committee has done, it's just, I just see this bring us to another level of really providing information to where it belongs. And it's been a frustration of mine since I've been the mayor to see that all the good work that this body does and the administration teaches and principals, it never gets out, you know? Sometimes the parents don't even know. And unless they're in tune to what's really going on. But this is a good start. I think this is going in the right direction, and I'm very supportive, so. Member Johnson?
Yeah. To the chair, I'm actually more confused now than ever. But, no, I really am. So just a couple of things here. As we talked about previously in regards to trying to get the IAs of parareducators into the kindergartens and having to take from different areas to do so. With this motion by Member Novick, by not doing that, then where are we at with the other stuff? Because we want to support... We want to support that as well, right?
You want to answer that?
No, I'm just... If you can answer it, that's fine.
How close are we? What's the shortage? What's the...
So with the two cuts, you're actually overcutting with the one cut. You're slightly short, but we could have a quick conversation on how to cut... You'd be short by $30,000 by doing one cut instead of two. Two cuts, you're overcutting by $55,000.
Okay. And again, I... So I would go back and I would actually probably agree with you and Member Mailman on kind of just overall seeing the improvement in communication and kind of seeing what that's doing out in the community. I would then turn around and agree with my Member Clancy. When I look at the job descriptions, they kind of read very similar. So I'm wondering why are we having these two positions that actually read very similar? And what is gonna be the difference? And how is this gonna look in the future, right? So it's just one of those things. So again, I guess I can't say too much, but I think what's on the table is the motion by Member...
I think Kamara?
The one... I think it's Member Novick first, right? And then we move on to the other ones, right? And I just... I guess I'm all set to vote on that.
Okay, so, yeah, that would be the procedure. The first amendment would be Member Novick's. I don't think official motion was made, but I think the motion would be to only cut one position?
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, to come to that. Good negotiation.
Yep. Okay.
We need a dollar amount, because our authority is dollars.
Brian, can you provide the dollar amounts exactly?
So the first motion would be 170. The second motion would be 85. Those are your two choices.
Okay.
That would cut either 170 or 85?
Yeah.
And there's nothing on the table to keep it as it is?
Well, if those both fail...
Okay, perfect.
Then we would take a motion to approve. Because if it fails, I would assume there's four votes to pass it. But, Member Mailman?
I just want to be clear. I don't, you know... I'm not a believer that communications is all good news stories. I don't think that at all, actually. I think we have to... It's about presenting truth and transparency to our parents and our families. And sometimes those aren't... I just want to make sure that it's not rainbows and whatever. Thank you.
No, I think any communication is better than what we had in the past, so, yeah. Okay. Member Novick, I think, was next?
So, Mr. Chair, I would say that under the... We have the two position descriptions as well. It would sound to me as though... And I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but it certainly sounds to me as though the indication from the colleagues from the committee in general would be to vote down both of those or to send them both back to administration if what we're actually looking for is a single position. I just want to sort of clarify procedure here, because we do still have those out there. And I would want to make sure that we did that correctly. I just want to say again, and I say this again with the highest of respect for Mr. O'Brien, as someone who does social media, as someone who works on a district... Who works on a webpage, first of all, I entirely agree that the job descriptions that are here and also then the work of the job description that we already approved for Mr. O'Brien, there's way too much sort of general fogginess in terms of who's doing what and what it is. I also do want to just clarify, this department also does include the entirety of the television, which, yes, is not funded out of the general fund, but those people are there, which is something that I don't think we necessarily are well representing. So I am gonna stand by my motion, Mr. Chair, because I actually... I do not... This was never proposed to the committee until we sort of had to find it in the budget book, which I already don't appreciate. But secondly, the case to me has simply not been made. And secondly, and finally, there is no context in which any school-based proposal would be put in the light of bringing something forward and simply being adopted. When I think of what I know to still be sort of the crying amount of needs that are out there, I can't countenance supporting this. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Seeing none?
So, yeah, so that motion, if it wasn't clear, it was for us to consolidate these job descriptions and...
What would happen is we'd take the $170,000 cut first, then take the $85,000 cut second. Then if one of these... One of these two succeed, then we'd take the job descriptions and send them back to administration to come back with a job description that sort of combines what Superintendent wants to do. Okay. Okay. Again, I just think these are important positions, and we're on the right track, whether it's one or two. But I think this is important. I think it's important to the administration. It's important to the school district. And so the first motion is to cut this by $170,000 and put it to the... Was it the paraprofessional, parareducators? Parareducators account. Roll call.
No.
Mr. Chair Johnson?
No.
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 Yes.
Uh, no. So the second... The second motion is to cut $85,000 and to put into parareducations, parareducators' account. Roll call.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Yes.
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 Uh, no. Okay, so... Oh, then we'll take the items and we're gonna recommit those back to the administration? Is that fair? Okay. All those in favor, opposed, so ordered? Yeah, the job descriptions, yeah. Okay, we are on crossing guard salaries on page 210, I believe. That's where we left off. All those in favor of approval, those in favor of opposed, so ordered? Nursing and clinical care salaries. All sat there? Member Novick? I sent the...
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Through the chair of administration, I know we're adding positions here. Where does this put us in terms of having an actual nurse in every school building for the entirety of the school day?
Ms. Els... Elsah?
Good chair, all schools would have access to a nurse. However, we would not have a full-time nurse for the full day, every day, in every school.
Okay, so can you run me through what the exceptions would be, please?
So, for example, Wauwukis that has a little over 100 kids would have access to a nurse three days a week.
Okay, so we're still not at a position where buildings that have children in them every day actually can depend on having a nurse in the building at the same time?
Not to be in the building the full day. However, they would be, for example, giving an example, like Wauwukis, they would go to Fresh Start two days a week, which is a block away. They would be accessible to Wauwukis if they were needed.
Right, but, I mean, that doesn't help you... That puts them that far away in an emergency. And that's extraordinarily concerning. How short are we, then, in terms of if we wanted to ensure that there was a nurse in every building that has students in it every day when the students are there? What would we need? Through the chair?
Between three to five, approximately.
Okay. So we still... And does the... The CNA doesn't actually bear on this at all, right? Those are positions that are actually dealing with individuals...
students, through the chair?
They're one-on-one to students, but they're also helping our life scales in the classroom, so not necessarily one-to-one.
Okay. Um, all right. I mean, there's no helping it now in terms of being able to find the, the space for this, but I, I do want to say that I'm gravely concerned to hear that we're still having children in buildings that don't have nurses. Emergencies don't arrange themselves on the schedule of the nurse being there. And I, I guess I had hoped that we were closer than that. And would, would urge that this be a priority as we move forward. Thanks.
I said a question. How many nurses do we have right now?
68. And I was, I just conferred with Brian, and we're, we would need three nurses.
You said we need three, so every school is covered full-time except for?
Well, we have several, several schools that need more than one nurse.
Yep.
Right.
Right. What was the maximum nurses we had in the past? Like, at one time, I know, this was initiative of mine, like, several years ago, and we had every single position filled, every slot filled with nurses. I want to say maybe, maybe 10 years ago, maybe? I know it goes by fast, but eight years ago anyways. I know you haven't been here. But we've, at one time, we had these nurse slots filled. And I guess we've gotten away from that because?
Through the chair. So this will actually be the highest level of nursing we've had in the new positions. I really intended to cover for vacancies, so, so there, when there are absences, there's still nurse coverage in the schools. I'm not sure that the information that we had full-time coverage in all the schools was accurate back then. So there are still some of the smaller programs that do have shared coverage of nurses.
Guess it wouldn't surprise me, but, okay. You know, I agree with Member Novick. Like, maybe like the year ran, we look at the, we get a quality review of the budget anyways, correct? If there's monies available that unspent, if you think it's going to go unspent, we can take that money and we put a motion that we move that to our school nurses. You know, maybe, maybe you don't get three, maybe you get the one, and at least then we'll go get to next year after that.
Through the chair, Dr. Koo did confirm we need two nurses, two additional nurses to have a nurse in every school.
Okay, so we're close. So I think we can find that over the, depending on savings, depending what kind of grant money comes in. So, okay. Member Clancy?
Thank you. So just to, just to, I did quick math. We're looking at like 72, 76,000 each, okay. So 150,000, okay.
Okay. Some form of motion, those in favor, opposed or ordered? Approve of the, of this budget? Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Okay, we are on. Educational support salaries. That's on page 213. All set. Go ahead, Member Clancy?
Thank you. So we had talked earlier, and I, I might have missed something. We're still in for our literacy tutors at 623,000? Yes, they're still in here? Okay. And I know, because there clearly was talk about not having them anymore. So my question to administration is, if we do not have them anymore, is there a reason to keep them on if we've already kind of said that we don't need them?
Through the chair, I think I'm going to reword what you're saying and make sure, yes, okay.
Thank you.
So earlier, when we discussed the desire and the need, and we agree, to have a paraprofessional assigned to every one of our kindergarten classrooms, we're 20 paras short. And we said what we could do is repurpose this, this item right here, these literacy tutors for 623,000, to make up the difference. So we wouldn't fill these positions, we would instead have, take this money and put it towards hiring the 20 paraprofessionals, plus we've been finding funding along the way as we've been going through this today. So as, as the book re, as it reads right now, they're there. But if we, if the committee so chooses, we can change that, use that money for paraprofessionals, then we would not have this item anymore. Does that answer your question?
It does. And I have a couple of motions from that, but I'm trying to figure out the math, to be honest, in my head right now.
Okay. I've been kind of keeping track of myself over here.
Because I'm thinking I would like to make the motion that we move 150,000 from literacy tutors.
Say it again?
150,000 from literacy tutors and make a transfer to our school nurse salaries. And I would also make the motion that we move 80, if I, Brian Allen, you may have to help me, 85,000 to cover, what was it, 30,000 to cover the rest of the paraprofessionals in kindergarten? 30,000. So it would be 180,000 total from this line item to those two categories.
Okay, I think Mr. Allen could have found that 30 grand on his own, but, okay. What's the impact on that? Do we have a negative impact on? Is, we're all set with this, so?
That's not enough, is it, Mr. Allen? We need 90, $900,000 for the 20 paras.
Yep. So we, we've achieved that with this 30,000, with the one communication position cut, with the 600,000 reduction in admin clerical and the 185,000.
I thought the admin clerical was 450.
I think the, I, the motion recorded at 600.
Oh, okay. That makes a difference.
Okay. Okay, so we're all set with the two of them?
Can I hear the, it again? So what are the, how are we going to find this 90, 900,000?
So with, with this 30,000, we've covered all 900,000. The two, it's the two integrated coaches, the 600, the 10 admin clerical positions, the one communications position, and then this 30,000.
And 150 will also go to fund two more nurses.
Correct. Okay. Wait, Member Clancy, you all set?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Member Kamara?
Yeah. So I acknowledge that. And I would, I'd like to ask, with the balances left over, how many literacy cultures will we, will we have?
Give me two seconds. 26.
That's good.
26 remaining.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Thank you.
Okay, so we're all set with that? Okay, so we're going to take that motion? No? Member Novick?
Yeah, so how are our literacy tutors allocated now? Is there one in every elementary school? Through the chair?
Who would answer that? Would that be you, Madam Superintendent?
I'm going to have Dr. Morse come up. Through the chair, yes, that's how we allocate them.
Right, and the, the question was framed one way before, but I, I think I would actually be interested in the way the administration would intend to deal with this. Would it be the intent of the administration that we would retain all 35, but cut back their hours? Or would the intent be to actually cut the positions? And I ask, out of interest, it's not under my purview, it'd be up to you to decide, but I, in trying to decide whether or not I support this motion, I would be interested in how you would deal with it.
Madam Superintendent?
So I would like to say that at this very moment, we would use our data to determine where this, that these tutors should be located. So the schools with the highest need should get the additional resource, but that we keep it at a amount of time that is feasible. So it would really depend on the number of students. We'd have to say, what's the criteria by which we're, we're trying to move the needle? How many students at such particular school? Then how much time would be appropriate to allocate? So I wouldn't want to, we'd, we'd have to come up with a criteria as, did I just say criteria? My goodness. Criteria as a district in terms of what we're trying to move. I would want to say that it's because these are literacy tutors, that we would focus on our first graders and second grade students. We'd have to use our star data to determine which students those are. And then, for example, if we've got, Quinn Sigeman has a very high number of students, then we need so many tutors there with so much hours to move the needle. And then we would change that based off of data. So unlike what, maybe what we've done in the past, where we've said everybody gets the same amount, we would rework that and say who needs what, and we would deploy them based off of the data.
And through the charity administration, given the new elementary literacy curriculum, what would, what has been the intent of administration regarding the literacy tutors and that implementation of the new curriculum?
Who's that? Dr. Morse?
Through the chair. So we just had training this month. We have trained every grade level. At this point, we have not trained our literacy tutors to implement the curriculum. We've had reasonable class sizes this year. So in the past, we had more tutors than we currently have. Post-COVID, we had fewer people interested in the position. So you would hear things like class size reduction, tutor, things like that. But this past year, we're able to provide a tutor to support acceleration in every, in every school. So the short answer here is, we have not planned the literacy tutors to be a integral piece to implementing the new literacy curriculum for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to cut 180,000 from the literacy tutors and move that to the paraeducators? Is that right? No, to what? School nurses, I'm sorry. You covered me on that perfect. I should have realized that. Okay, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Yep, Ms.?
So that's the motion?
No, it's not the motion.
So I'm sorry. So it's 150,000 to school nurses and 30,000 to paraprofessionals?
Oh, okay. So it's going to be $150,000 from the literacy tutors to the school nurses? And $30,000 from the literacy tutors to the paraprofessionals? Roll call.
Member Clancy?
Yes.
No.
Member Kamala?
Yes.
Member Mailman?
No.
Member McCullough?
Yes.
Roll call number?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so approve that, nursing and clinical care, those in favor, opposed or ordered? Do we do educate? No, I'm confused. Education support? Is that the one we just on? Okay, we just did that one. That one's all set. Those in favor, approved, so ordered? Transportation overtime, that's on page 216. Seeing no questions, people fine with that. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Custodian overtime, page 217. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Okay, we're on maintenance services overtime, page 218. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Support overtime, page 219. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Special reserve, special revenue accounts, we have nutrition program. And any questions on that?
Yeah.
They say that they do a good job and much appreciated. Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Grant programs?
Mr. Chair, we haven't even gotten?
What's that?
We were, I was still turning pages, I'm sorry.
Oh, where are you at? I'm sorry.
Child nutrition.
Oh, nutrition program?
Yes.
Okay, page 244. Okay, go ahead.
I just, I wondered, because we are a community eligibility, there's a, there's a relationship here between the money that we have and the number of students that we feed. But we're sort of seeing the, the incremental increases. Has there been an impact as we've come back into the buildings, do we think, in terms of the number of students who are, who are being served on, yeah, are there, is that, have we, have we seen any impact on the number of students being served as a result of, of us sort of the last couple of years? Through the chair?
We, just like other food service operations, we've had our challenges when it comes to staffing. So there is an opportunity in that also, along with the negative, there's an opportunity to restructure and realign our staffing consistent with the labor contract we have now with the stackable credentials. So we're addressing that. And our budget does account for culinary professionals in every secondary school to act as production leaders to support the staff that we do bring in. So we're just in a position of an overhaul, I think, that the industry hasn't seen in quite some time.
Thank you.
So, Bobby, thank you for all your work during COVID and thank you for all the, I haven't really had a chance to talk to you, so I just want to thank you for, not that we see you, but thank you for your service to our Thursday night dinners and food's excellent and what you do for the Listopop schools. So your whole group does a good job, so much appreciated. So we all sit there? Those in favor, opposed or ordered? Grant programs, any questions on that? Ms. Novick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the 20 wraparound coordinators are coming out of here now in, in terms of the budget. But there isn't any change in terms of the, the various expenditures sort of sorted among the, the lines. And I'm struggling with how, kind of how much I really understand of what we're doing with Title I, I have to say, which doesn't feel very good for 12.8 million dollars. I'm wondering if there's some way that we can have a, have a better understanding of what we're actually paying for here. And I know that, that in some cases, we can talk about, you know, money being carried over and there's other things like that that happen with grants. But first of all, is there anything that can be said about sort of 20 wraparound coordinators coming out of here and that we were paying for something last year and I don't know kind of what we're not paying for through the charity administration?
Ms. Allen?
Through the chair, just for clarity, it's not, it's the 20 new wraparound coordinators, all the other wraparound coordinators are also funded from Title I in nets because of a supplant issue for federal spending. We've also placed them in the Title I grant. Just generally speaking, this grant supports most of our focus instructional coaches, wraparound coordinators, and I think a few preschool teachers in the district. What, what I might suggest is, once we get the actual FY24 awards, we always make a summary presentation during the first quarter report. Maybe we can have a little more expanded presentation at that time for each of the entitlement grants in terms of what programs they support, positions and so forth.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, those in favor, opposed or ordered? Uh, Member Kamala?
Thank you. I'm just, this is for understanding purpose. So I remember we put out notice, I think it was last year, for ex, to seek external mental health supports in the schools. And I think that generated, I think, four. I would, so I want to understand, like, I believe we were hoping to get more, but then we only got four. So like, so my question is, like, the balance or the difference in funding, I don't, I don't know how to pose this question, but I want to understand, is there funding for us to be able to? there funding for us to be able to seek out more supports for, for that category?
Mr. Allen?
Through the chair. So those contracts have been funded through the ESER, uh, three grant, um, and the, the spending FY24 is predicated on the level that we have this year in terms of contracts. If we were to expand the number of services, and I'll defer to see if that's needed or not, we'd have to identify additional funding for those contracts.
So with that being said, that, um, because I, I'm hoping that we would, because we didn't get the number. I don't, I don't even know if we had a target number that we wanted in the first place, and then we only got four contracts.
Through the chair. It wasn't that we, we got the contracts that we needed, it's those actual providers are having trouble still staffing up. Correct, Ms. Asalosa, the mental health provider? So we, we, we put out an RFP, we got enough interest, we contracted with them. They're having trouble actually finding the therapist to then do the work. So we wouldn't want to plan for more when the ones that we already have are still struggling with actually having people to work for them. Um, we are planning on moving for, I mean, we'll have them for next school year as well. Um, the other piece that I think you may be referring to is it took quite a while for the RFP to get out, for the RFP to get approved, for all the contracts to get in place. So we weren't able to even get everything in place until early spring, March, I believe. And again, of those agencies, they don't even have all their staff so that they can even provide the services. So that's our biggest challenge. They're having the same challenge we're having. Finding the right people, finding enough people, those kind of things.
Mm-hmm. So there's no way that we can provide additional, or that we see that there's a need for more? Is that what I'm understanding? Because we are already all set with that category?
We, what we need is for them to actually have the staff that they've promised in their contract to be able to provide those services.
So we, we're waiting first to get those services per the contract, to have a therapist first, and then be able to see if we can get more?
Yes. Challenging.
So it is a very interesting thing, though, because we approved job descriptions without much data. Um, anyways, I, I digress. Thank you.
Okay, so we're good on that one. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. We're on other special revenue funds, page one fifty-four to one fifty-five.
But, Mr., are we, is that...
Did I miss that?
Well, we talked about Title I. Are you saying that we need to make sure we've asked all of our questions about the grants?
I, I looked around.
Want to...
So I just moved on, but, uh, no, go ahead. You got more questions?
So, yeah, so we, um...
You want to take them one at a time, or?
Member Kamara had, no, I, I, I only have questions on a few things. Um...
Okay.
So my understanding on the Head Start grant, which is page two fifty, um, is that the, the allocate, the, the decline in allocation for instructional materials, um, is, is covered through other sources. I do want to say that this, um, because Head Start is run out of a sort of discrete pot of money that isn't getting any larger, and their costs are going up like all costs are, it does feel as if they're having to do, um, the same amount of work with less funding effectively, and I would like us to consider that as we talk about early childhood ed. Um, the other thing Mr. Chair was on, ESER three, which my colleague was sort of leading us towards, um, which is on page two sixty-five. Uh, just to be clear, the line I, the instructional materials, I assume that that's sort of the, sort of half of the literacy curriculum, or something of that nature? My understanding was that we were funding it through ESER three, is that correct? Through the chair.
Yep, Mr. Allen?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay. And then, the non-public allocation on line G, is that, did we have to give money to somebody else in this one? I'm trying to remember if, through the chair.
Through the chair, that is incorrect line.
Oh, okay.
Um, we can provide...
Okay.
An update on the correct line for that number.
Thank you. I'm all set on grants, Mr. Chair.
All set on grants, we're all set on grants. Member Kamara?
I just have a question, um, just for maintenance purposes and sustainability. Um, just to understand if we are, are thinking about, um, pursuing any other grants with regards to, like, after ESER dollars?
Mr. Allen?
I'm sorry, can you ask the question again? I missed it.
Are we seeking any, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, um, so are we seeking any funds or grants to supplement ESER?
So, through the chair, we're always looking for grants that align with district priorities or initiatives. So whether it's supplementing ESER, or supplementing school safety, or supplementing tutoring, or whatever, um, our grants office seek, seeks out grant funding sources to support those programs.
Yeah, so we're good here. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. We are on other special revenue funds, page one fifty-four to one fifty-five. I mean, uh, yeah, one fifty-four to one fifty-five.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, are we talking actually about pages one sixty-eight and one sixty-nine, I think? Because I think we talked about the ones on page one fifty-four and one fifty-five.
These are special revenue funds.
Is that right? Okay, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
Well, this is on page one fifty-four, yep, and one fifty-five, special revenue funds, and one, would you say one page sixty-eight?
It's one sixty-eight through one six seventy.
Okay. So what is, one's federal grants, and one's other funds. Okay. Okay. Any questions? Member Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair to the administration. Is this where we, we will find the, um, funding for the live streaming and stuff like that?
Through the chair, yes. So the funding is going to come from the Channel eleven revenue. You approved a contract this evening for a five-year contract to install that equipment. It just, it's the educational access channel line on page one sixty-eight and one sixty-nine.
All right, thank you.
What's that?
Um, I'm just wondering, make a motion? I, I'd just like to make a motion to kind of get a report back this, report back on this special revenue fund, um, during the first quarter, just to have a good understanding on where we're at. Thank you.
Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Okay, I'll sit here. Those in favor, opposed or ordered. Okay. This brings us to the end of the budget. Do a good job. And the motion is approved. Let's have the school committee approve the fiscal year 2024 annual budget as amended. Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Member Kamara?
Yes. Yes.
McCullough?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. So we have motion to adjourn, and, uh, trying to think what's this weekend? They did cancel Juneteenth Day on Saturday, so it's supposed to be eighty percent chance of rain. And, uh, there's Juneteenth flag raising though tomorrow night at, um, check with my office, but it's tomorrow night at a certain time, five o'clock, four o'clock. And there's something on Sunday. Our Father's Day in Vietnamese, uh, we have the Vietnamese Southeast, I'm sorry, Southeast Asian Festival is on, uh, on Sunday. So motion to adjourn, those in favor, opposed or ordered.